I credit my success in business and to team building and mutual respect. I served on executive boards at MBX and Penny Camp as Vice President of Miracosta Marching Band and of Operations and the Vice President of Fundraising respectively. And I've held many docent positions and committee positions within the schools. Having my boots on the ground in our schools alongside parents like yourself and staff has deeply connected me to our school community. Whether you're a student, grandparent, parent, or community member, teacher, staff, or administrator, we all share the collective goal of expanding on academic excellence in our district. In order to do so, it must be our priority not to support just our students in times of crisis, but also to foster empathy and social competence. I know how unique MBUSD is and I want to preserve and protect that. So that someone is me. Please vote Tina Shupri for MBUSD School Board. Let's achieve excellence together. Thank you.
Thank you. Wish Weinstein is next, whenever you're ready.
On behalf of the candidates, we would like to thank the Easy Reader and the Women Voters for hosting this tonight. I am Wish. I'm a former teacher, a current parent, and an active member of our school community. There are three things you should know about me. My wide range of experience, my real-world knowledge of school finance, and that I am solution-oriented. My real-world experience and variety of positions separates me from the other candidates. I have been a classroom teacher, PTA president, MBF Board Member, DAC President, and on the Safety Committee. I have worked on several campaigns. Working on both the Measure MB and the Measure A campaigns are where I learned the most. The community let us know in 2018 that Measure MB spoke to who Manhattan Beach was. This past spring, they let us know that Measure A is too ambitious. The most successful people learn from their failures. I am one of these people. I know firsthand what works and what doesn't. We do know that together, we must find a way to maintain the quality of schools we have come to expect here in Manhattan Beach. When looking at a budget, we should always be asking ourselves two questions. Are the students safe and are they learning? I have been on the Budget Advisory Committee for several years. I have also been a classroom teacher for almost a decade. When looking at a budget sheet, the numbers mean nothing without context. My experience can bring the context and be able to assess when making these cuts, what is appropriate and what will affect learning and safety. I am a person who goes out of my way to find common ground with those that may not have the same opinion as me. I am also solution-oriented. During COVID, I was one of the first parents to successfully advocate in getting our kids back to school. I didn't do it by attending a rally or yelling at a board meeting. I did it by going to Cabinet and to Board with suggestions. I pushed for our students with special needs to have priority in accessing our classrooms. I met with parents who had access to software, who could map out the desks based on the size of the classrooms. I directed parents where and to whom to direct their energy in order to make a difference. I have the real-life experience.
Thank you. I run a tight ship, otherwise we'd be here all night. Jen Fenton, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Jen Fenton. I have been serving on the MBUSD School Board for the last four years. I am also the only incumbent that is seeking reelection this November. My term has been challenging, but there's a lot to celebrate, too. We had Measure C innovation and renovation on every single one of our campuses. These buildings represent scientists, authors, and engineers of the future. We delivered a state-of-the-art athletics facility both on time and on budget. We approved several new AP and Honors Courses. We won CIF Championships, had an educator named California Teacher of the Year. And earlier this month, Miracosta was just named the number-one public high school in the South Bay. There is a lot to be proud of. Going forward, though, I think there's three things that we can concentrate on. Number one is academic excellence and preparedness for all. MBUSD is a top-tier district. We have to continue investing in curriculum, programs, and technology to allow our students to become the leaders of tomorrow. We also need to invest in professional development for our staff, counselors, teachers, other district employees, so they have the best teaching practices at their disposal. Number two, we need to maintain a prudent budget. Expenses cannot outmatch revenue. We should be using COVID relief and state budget allocation for the investment in programs, curriculum, and technology. Let's maintain 5% reserves so we can use that capital in the future. And let's come up with a local-controlled funding measure so we're no longer reliant on the state. Number three, let's reimagine MBUSD. We should be creative with the funding that we have. Miracosta offers an array of pathways for our students to find their passions, both inside and outside the classroom. Let's mimic that at our elementary and our middle school. Create STEM language immersion programs so every student can access specialty classes. I bring stability, continuity, and much-needed institutional knowledge. Experience matters, and I hope you'll vote for me.
Thank you. So now that the clapping is done, I'll ask you to hold your applause until the closing statement so we can keep it impartial. We're going to start with the questions. There'll be one minute for each response. We are going to start with Wish Weinstein. The first question. What grade, A through F, would you give MBUSD today and explain why?
I would say A-. And my slogan is "Wish for Even Better Schools." I do feel like there is a lot that is going really well. Jen alluded to a lot of those things. You know, recently, I'm very upset, and I'm sure many of you are in the room as well, about some of the vandalism that's been happening. I think that's an area that we can definitely improve. You know, we have incredible academic programs. We have incredible teachers. We have motivated students, but there is always room for improvement.
Thank you. Jen?
Thank you. Wish alluded to some of the problems that we're facing, but I do want to highlight some of our successes. If you look at some of our recent testing data for our English language, in the last four years, our scores have gone up 4% to 11%. Our math scores for the same period have increased about 9%. And when you compare our scores to South Bay schools in the area, whether it's El Segundo, Redondo Beach, or Torrance, our scores are about 10% to 15% higher than other districts. Why is that? Because we hone in on the individual learner. Are we perfect? No. Have we made mistakes along the way? We certainly have, but we've learned from those mistakes. We have a culture of care. Every student has to feel safe, has to feel protected, has to feel welcome. And we've been doing that since kindergarten through the 12th grade. It is something that we believe in. We believe in core academics. We teach that in every single grade and every single class. A-. Getting it in under the button.
Thank you. Tina?
I'm going to go with a B+. I think there's always room to, you know, if, when your student is receiving a B+, they know that they can achieve more, they know they can go for more, there's higher stars to reach for. I also think it's difficult to even put a number, you know, because there's so many, there's so much data that we need to gauge and we need to look at, that some of it we haven't looked at yet and some of it we need to get to, some of it we know. And whenever you're looking to put a number on something, like everyone in the room and everyone outside of this room talks about academic excellence. How are we, how do we rate as far as academic excellence? Well, everyone has a different answer for that. Is it test scores? Is it GPA average? Is it number of students entering top 25 universities? It's actually all of these things. It's not just one line to success. We're going to have to look at all these paths. We need a dashboard to understand where our students are, where our staff is, and how we can do better. So I think that, you know, there's always room for improvement, and I'd like to be a part of that.
Thank you. Our next question, I was, because there's so many of these questions, so I'm going to try to take all of them and put them together. So how can MSUSD ensure that all students, race, religion, sexual orientation, feel safe at school? Apparently, there's been hate incidents that repeatedly occur, especially of the Black, Jewish, and LGBTQIA community. And the general question is, what can you do about it?
That's a great question. Let me be candid. What's happening on our campuses is unacceptable, and it's something that we all need to use as a teaching moment. Janet Allen, who works at the district, said at a recent board meeting that she would lose it if one more time a student said they didn't know what a word meant, or they didn't know that a symbol was hurtful. And you know what? I'm losing it for her. We have to teach history thoroughly. We have to reinstitute our field trips to the Museum of Tolerance. We have to have our cameras up and running to ensure we can catch those who are committing vandalism faster than we can say "on." This is a teaching moment for everybody. We have our kids from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It is a community conversation about what our culture is, what our beliefs are, what it means to be inclusive, what are our shared values. We do have cultural programs on each campus, and Costa is wonderful for that because the students meet every Tuesday. We have them at our elementary school, but there's more that we can do, and I'm really disappointed what's happening in our community.
Okay. Is Tina next? Did I already forget who? Go ahead.
This topic is absolutely one of my passions. It's one of my platforms. I've been on the ground. Just having a son that's actually finished and gone through the 12-year cycle here at the district and still having a child in elementary, I knew that there were things we could do at the elementary school. So what we're able to do independently, all of the five elementary schools, we're starting some grassroots programs relating to culture of care and care committees. And they were aligning themselves with ADL's No Place for Hate. And we've had an amazing two years. Robinson launched it two years, one year before us, and then Penny Camp will be entering for the first time this year. And one of the things I did at the end of the year last year was think about, why don't we have this at the middle school? So I was able to message into Mrs. Aaron's at the middle school, and this is something that she embraced, and she was very excited to implement, and she's moved on. But we have the new principal there that's just as excited to implement this. And I questioned, and I sent a message to one of our superintendents. I said, "What about, what about a whole district that's a No Place for Hate district?" That's something I believe in.
Thank you. Wish?
So it starts with us. We are the role models. Our kids are looking to us. And all of these acts that are happening right now, any child development expert will tell you that that is a cry for help. They are looking for where is the line, what is okay, what is not okay? And we need to send the message that what is happening is not okay. They look to us for the answers. This morning was the International Peace Ceremony held by the 15th Street. And it was very inspiring and a good reminder that there are a lot of incredible people out there, and there is room for peace, and there are people that that is their goal. And, you know, there's over 250,000 polls internationally, and everybody took that moment at noon today. And it was quite moving and just, it was very moving to be able to feel like it was happening all across the world and not just here in Manhattan Beach. And we need to remind our kids that there is a bigger world out there, and we have to do our civic duty to be part of it.
Thank you. Next question, which we will start with Tina. How do you define equity in academics? How will using the principle of equity so that each learner thrives?
I know our district has an equity policy. It's been in place for quite some time. So it's not a new word. It's not a dirty word. It's actually a very powerful word. And, you know, there's so many ways. Again, I always look at, look at a problem or a question from multiple perspectives. So we know we have our students with learning differences, and we need to make sure that they are absolutely thriving in our school system. We have different situations where they'll need accommodations, or they'll need modifications, and that's something that we have to be sensitive to. We know that they're about 10% of our school system, but that, but that absolutely means that we need to direct funds towards those students. And I also know that, you know, whenever we have classroom curriculum relating to different diverse authors, that's very exciting that we're seeing some change in our curriculum so that we can get more voices and more people, everyone in the classroom to feel like I've been seen, I've been heard, and I've been listened to, and I'm valued. And I think that's very powerful. Thank you.
Thank you. Wish?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. How do you define equity in academics? How will the use, how will use the principle of equity so that each other, each learner thrives? I should have probably put this together a little bit better.
So it's important that each child is able to access the curriculum. And it's important, and as a teacher, I understand what this means, and you have to be able to reach a child at their level. Scaffolding is the term that's often used in education. Our professional learning communities that our teachers have been involved with, there was a heavy training that started right before COVID. Unfortunately, only some of our staff was able to be trained in this prior to the pandemic. So this year, I know that our principals have asked that what's best interest for the students is for all of our teachers to revisit these professional learning communities. And students have something called WIN Time, which stands for "what I need." And so each child during that time is able to, if they need a reading specialist, they go see the reading specialist. If they need the math specialist, they go see the math specialist. If they need to be with their own teacher for whatever, you know, may have come up the previous day that they just need a reminder about, that's where they spend their time. And they decide, and the teacher decides together, how to best spend that time in order to achieve academic excellence.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. Equity goes to the heart of what MBUSD is as a district. It also is a cornerstone in public education. Based on our personalized learning goals, as well as what we are required to report in our LCAP goals, we have to meet each learner where they're at, and we then have to develop a plan and an academic system to propel them to the next level of excellence. As a board member, my job is to advocate for all students regardless of what their academic needs are and what their proficiency levels are as well. We started a program called EMWell, which is for students with emotional disturbances. And we keep those students here rather than sending them to different districts or different programs. And this is a perfect example of equity. They can access our services while also participating in the Costa curriculum. Our students thrive because we've met them where they're at, and we've provided them with an opportunity to show excellence. I've heard from countless families that their students have really just loved this, and they stay in MBUSD because of this equity component.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Wish. Most college admissions packet I've seen for my senior son includes questions about how students have advanced the causes of equity, diversity, social justice, and inclusion. What do you suggest the district do so students have the necessary knowledge and experience to respond accordingly?
So my goals as a trustee would be similar to that of a parent. I want my own children to be decent, hard-working kids who can reach their full potential. I want them to be inclusive, and I want them to be kind to one another. The mission of MBUSD is to educate global citizens, and it has been for years. Our schools do an excellent job preparing our students for two- and four-year colleges. Almost about 90% attend either a two- or four-year college. I was not surprised to learn that about a year ago, when it came up in one of the District Advisory Council meetings, about how that this is a new, common question that is on the college application. And our kids are ready. They've been ready. They already have what they need in order to be able to answer that question, and I'm proud to be able to be part of that.
Thank you. Jen?
Thank you. MBUSD has always prided itself on preparing our students to navigate the world. Citizenship is really important to us. We like to teach our kids how to think and how to see the world through a global lens. I think it's something that the district has always done. It's something that the district will continue to do. We believe in a mature understanding of the world. We believe that once our students have that, they can have conversations, they can make tough decisions, and they can change the world. Learning is social. Learning is emotional. You can't forget that. And we want every person to feel safe and included in our schools. Our inclusion efforts of EDSJI are the ones that we've had since the early 2000s with Character Counts and Safe School Ambassadors. We also have Stand Up Inclusion Pledge, which I help write, and it's in every single classroom. So our EDSJI efforts are no different than what we've been doing for a very long time, and we will continue to do it because our kids must feel, must feel safe and included.
Thank you. Tina?
I can validate those questions are definitely on the applications. My son just went through the process. He applied to 25 schools across the country, and we saw the question over and over. And I think, I think the thing we have to remember for our kids, as we were talking up here, that we want to build these contributing members, contributing members to society and global citizens, but it doesn't have to be once they step off the campus. I think we need to start the process and make them contributors now. Like, there's so many things that we can do outside of our, outside of the walls of our schools and outside of the walls of our city. I know that we have partnerships, you know, in small situations in our schools, but there's so much more we can do. I also know, and I typically will share them in whatever form I can, that we have amazing assemblies that are created by our clubs, our diversity clubs on campus here at Costa, and they have so much to teach us, our own students. Just yesterday, there was a video created by our Jewish Cultural Club, and it was so life-changing, and I think it allowed everyone in our community to learn what the students are thinking, what our administration is thinking, and I support all of those programs.
Thank you. The next question, we will start with Jen, and I had a couple of these questions, so I'm going to combine them. Which academic indicators do you believe are the most important and why?
That's a great one. I think you could look at your test scores. I think that's an easy one to go to, but that's just a snapshot of your child on any given day. I think we actually need to look at measurement of success from where they started to where they are now. This is done through evaluations that take place in our classrooms each and every day. Our teachers have been trained with professional development to provide what's called formative assessments, which is feedback. It allows our students to really grow. It allows our students to know where they need to work on. And I think that's a great way of looking at it, rather than a simple test score which evaluates the kids, you know, just based on a multiple-choice question.
Tina?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Which academic indicators do you believe are the most important and why?
I think I said earlier that, you know, there are multiple indicators. There's not just one indicator to measure our academic success, either in a student or as a district, if we're going to take an average across the whole system. So, you know, we are looking at GPAs. We're looking at test scores, like she said. But I also think something that we have to consider is, you know, how do we make sure that that student is not just learning to get the best grade, that they're actually learning the material? We know that some of our neighboring schools and some of the programs within our school district are considering and implementing mastery of subject. And that means that you're not, you have the opportunity to retake the test, you know, during office hours or during a lunch break, and that allows our students to not feel as overwhelmed during the school week, but it allows them to actually learn the subject and work towards, you know, that 100% so they can move on to the second chapter with actually having that mastery. And I truly believe in that. That's something that we should continue to review and audit, and how well it's working, and maybe pilot it, you know, very strongly and very appropriately so we can see how well it's working and if our teachers are having the bandwidth to do that.
Thank you. Wish?
As a former teacher, I can say wholeheartedly that no one assessment should ever just, you know, decide how a child is doing. Any given day, they could be having a terrible day or a fantastic day. You know, there's obvious indicators. I also think it's important to look for trends, and if all of a sudden there's some, there's a dip or a rise in their, in their scores, it's important to connect with the child and find out. I also think that parent conferences go a long way. When I was a teacher, every time that we would have parent conferences for weeks afterwards, it was just this drastic improvement, and there was no specific set of criteria or anything that I was doing differently. It was just that we all had a chance, and I would, as of, when I taught fifth grade, I would invite the students to those conferences and have them part of the conversation. And so, which made the child feel accountable. And I would like to see us have more opportunities for parent conferences because I think that they, especially in the younger grades, I think they go a really long way with kids.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Tina. How will you go about ensuring academic success across entire K-12 student population? And then I'll just combine that. Would parents want a school district that sets their students up for success? How will you ensure a pathway to academic success for every student? And then we have about three other questions that are similar.
That's a, that's a great question. I think, you know, what I've had the opportunity to do is be here on the ground in the community or with the parents, with the students, with some of the staff, and I've asked these questions. I've asked them over and over. And what I've learned in listening to, you know, some of our staff is that if a child feels connected to this campus, and if they have connection to their home, their parents and their family at home, those kids are thriving. And those that don't have those connections are the ones that are struggling and that, the ones that might need that extra attention and those extra services. So I know in order to ensure academic success, we need to make sure that our kids are healthy, that they have, you know, social, social-emotional, you know, stability. And if we're not monitoring all of those, all of those metrics and looking at the student as a whole, and our teachers are not trained to do so to see when and if a student might be struggling, they might not have been on the radar ever before, but with, with, you know, with some, with some professional development, the teachers might be able to flag something going on in the classroom. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Wish?
So I talked a little bit before about the professional learning communities, and I think that that would apply here as well. But I also think that class size is critical. And for at least 10 years, the MB, I mean, MBF has done the survey for many, many years, but over the last 10 at least, it comes up every single time that parents prioritize class size, and that's for a reason, because it impacts every day. It impacts everything you teach. It impacts every student, and it just allows more interaction and more connections, like Tina was talking about. It's important that every child find one adult at least on campus that they can relate to, and that if they are struggling, that they can go to. It may not be their teacher, but every child needs to find someone that they can connect to on campus to feel like they can actually learn and be part of the community.
Thank you, Jen.
I talked a little bit about this with my formative assessments. I also mentioned it with respect to the test scores, but really, it goes to the heart of MBUSD and our personalized learning goal. It's meeting the student where they're at. It's understanding what exactly they need from the teacher, from the curriculum, from our district, and allowing them to succeed on a path that's right for them. There's no one student that's alike. Maybe a student needs math assistance. Maybe a student needs reading assistance. We've put programs in place so we could provide those resources. Having conferences with teachers, having open conversations with administration, allowing the child to feel safe, to feel included, allowing the child to be represented in the curriculum. Those are all ways that we ensure academic success.
Thank you. Since this was such a popular question, I'll do another minute round with, it sounds like all three of you have a plan, but how exactly are you going to accomplish it? And we will start with Wish.
So I think that the biggest challenge that whoever is elected is going to face is going to, is going to be to bring this community together and to make everyone feel like their voice is being heard, and every child, and making sure that their voice is heard. And that is going to be critical to get anything accomplished. And without it, I don't, I mean, I just, I mean, it's a real struggle right now to figure out how we can come together. And I think that that has to be the most important and the, and the first thing that happens in order to make real progress and make real change. And, you know, like I said before, I do think our schools are fabulous, but I think that there is always room for improvement and, you know, there's a lot of ways to do that, but I could talk all night about that. So I'm going to end there.
Thank you. Jen?
So a lot of it is continuing the curriculum that we do follow, that we are required to follow, as well as instituting the social-emotional learning, which we have continued to do, and sort of add into that component the, the culture of care. But there's a question as to whether or not we are teaching the basics, and I want to make sure everybody knows we are still teaching the basics. I want to make sure everybody knows that your academics, meaning your reading, your writing, your arithmetic, that is happening every single day. We will never veer from that, but we won't stop adding layers of social-emotional learning. We won't stop adding layers of inclusion. We won't stop adding layers of safety. We won't stop adding opportunities for our students to voice their opinion. These are all important things that make our district great.
Thank you. Tina?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. The question is, based on all the questions that we got on this question. We heard your plan, but we wanted to hear how you would actually accomplish it.
Okay. Yeah, I think whenever you have a very difficult problem in front of you, you absolutely need a plan. And, you know, some of the things I mentioned are, right now, some of my, you know, fresh new ideas, but you actually need to, and what I understand is there's opportunities to form a, form a committee within the district. So if there is a crisis, or if there is a problem, or there's something we're trying to tackle, then the district will put out a request of action, and we include administrators, teachers, parents, community members to form a committee and tackle this plan. And when you tackle this plan, you can lay out the solutions, you can lay out the ideas, and again, data-driven results to make sure that we know that we're going to, we're going to provide the right solutions for the right, for the right problems. I know part of my plan was to make sure there's an adult, or there's, there's access resources for the students that need the help that might not already have services. We know we have Beach City's Health District in our, is part of one of our partnerships that brought on a student, brought on a resource twice a week, but it's not enough. We've heard it's not enough.
Thank you. You might have seen me kind of working with all these questions because I'm trying to put them in categories. So we'll finish off education with what are two main ways to improve teacher quality and decrease class size? And we will start with Jen.
Teacher quality, I would say continuing with evaluations. Those do happen. It is part of the negotiation process, but our teachers are evaluated. It's part of our ed code. Temporary employees are evaluated around once a year. Permanent employees are evaluated about every five years. And that's through an agreement with the teacher and the administrator so long as things are going well. So having those evaluations, making sure that they're done properly and regularly is how I would answer the first question. The second question was, oh gosh.
How do you go about, actually?
Oh, how do I go about? Yeah, staffing. Staffing is going to be our biggest issue going forward. We know that budget and enrollment drive our staffing because that's the revenue that we pay our teachers with. So we have to fill any vacancies with qualified individuals. And our HR department is going to have to continue to recruit people who are amazing educators to ensure that our kids are getting the best education.
Okay. Tina, I'm going to repeat this because, just to be clear on the question. What are two main ways to improve teacher quality and decrease class size?
Okay. I know I had the opportunity to attend back to school night at Miracosta as well as MBMS this, this past couple of weeks and haven't been able to do that in person for the last couple of years. So being in the classroom, seeing what these teachers are able to, to describe what's going to be happening, just feeling their energy, feeling their vibe. I feel that the teachers that I met, you know, the seven teachers on one campus and the seven teachers on another, we have an amazing staff. I've felt this way for the past 12 years. And I, I'm proud of our teacher quality, but I know that whenever there is opportunity for us to, to support them with additional professional development and we need to understand what professional development they need, that we can, we can actually, like you said, increase their, the teacher's quality. And as far as class size is concerned, one of the things that, you know, that's one of the things that we just can't compete with when it comes to the private schools, right? People might leave our district because they want that smaller class size, the eight to one ratio, the 10 to one ratio.
Thank you. Wish?
I, you know, I think it's great that we do evaluate our teachers. I would like to see more evaluations, but more informal conversations. And kind of going back to what I was talking about with the students and the conferences, I just would like to see more casual conversations. It's not meant to be punitive. It's not meant to be critical. It's meant to improve and, and also for teachers to have to self-reflect and share that with their principal or share that with their mentor or their colleagues if they're within a department. And again, not have it be punitive. As far as class size is concerned, you know, MBF is, thank goodness for MBF because our class sizes would not be what they are today without them. You know, we've had, the current parcel tax that did pass in 2018 does currently fund 22 teachers. If that does not get extended in 2024, we will be looking at a dramatic increase in class size because we will have no choice but to lay off some of those teachers. So, you know, unfortunately, class size, the only way to really address it is funding.
Thank you. The next question, still education. Do you support banning books? And I will start with Tina.
This week is National Ban Book Week, so happy National Ban Book Week. I absolutely do not support banning any books in our school system. What I do know, when there was, you know, controversy relating to a few books on our campus, I did the homework. When it didn't feel right to me, what was happening, I contacted the English departments of the middle school. I contacted the English departments of the high school. And I want to understand that assignment to the nth degree. So they provided me access to the assignment. It was actually a co-learning assignment between a parent and the student. And they were supposed to select together a book that was on an award-winning books, book list of an adult, young adult titles. And it's up to that family, the parent and the child, to decide those books. But again, it needs, if there is a book that, there, there just should not be this process of banning books in our district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I agree, we should not be banning books.
Period. Great. Jen?
I agree, we should not be banning books. But what I will say is my opinion is actually totally irrelevant because I am a board member and I have to follow the California Department of Education standards. So I just want to put that forth. That is my role as a board member. There are books that are required according to curriculum. That's what's set forth by the California Department of Education, our core standards, our framework. There's books that students can read for free reading, that they can select. And we have partnerships with all of our teachers in every single one of our classrooms who understand the maturity level, who understand the subject matter. They can help guide the appropriate novel to our kiddos. It's also a conversation that parents need to be involved in. If a parent doesn't want their kid reading a specific book, they can opt out. They can say no if it's of controversial matters.
Great. The next question, we'll start with Wish. What lessons were learned from Measure A?
About 100. For those of you that don't know, I was the co-chair for Measure A. I could talk all night about it. But the most important thing for everyone to understand is that I heard the community. They, it was an overwhelming response. And we need to do better about involving the community in deciding what is a comfortable number for them. And it's just, it's just really important that everyone understands that, that there is a need for funding. There is a need for sustainable funding because one-time funding doesn't really do anything. You can buy something one time, but you can't start a program with it. You can't hire teachers with it because next year they won't be there. And I'm open to other ideas and other suggestions. And I'll be the first person to knock on doors to help get it done. But it is important that we involve the community in whatever it is that we do next time.
Thank you. Jen?
So having gone to Sacramento in the past to advocate for additional school funding, I understand the importance and the need of a local controlled measure that allows our district to no longer be reliant on the state. We do need another parcel tax. I passed the one in 2018 with the support of over 67% of our community. It was a group effort. We need to go back to that group. We need the engagement that Wish and her entire community brought together to understand school funding. It's something that we've been trying to do for years. As a parent, as a board member, as a community member, I would be remiss and I would be very disappointed if we as a whole could not bring that to our students. Provide smaller class sizes. Provide additional programming. Provide additional counselors and social workers. It's needed and we found that out through Measure A. And I hope, I really, really hope we can come together and do it again because in 2024, Measure MB expires.
Thank you. Tina?
I'll, I'll go back to my idea of, you know, making sure you have a plan. One of the things that we learned 10 years ago, when, you know, we know that we've had bonds and measures that have not passed. Some have not passed, some have passed. But one of the, one of the successful programs that happened about 10 years ago is when we initiated the facilities master plan. We collected information from the community, parents, teachers, residents and our, our staff here on campus. And they created a list of everything they wished for. And from that, a budget of 325 million was born. We were able to, after polling the community and polling our residents to see what was going to be passed or potentially passed on, on the ballot, we knew that we could fund about 145 of that. So we know that we need to come up with a plan, assess the community and then create, you know, what we can accomplish of putting it out on the ballot. So I think that those are the, like, the critical methodology that you put in place.
Thank you. The next question, Jen will go first. Recognizing the California education budget complexities, how would you as a board member determine how to direct one-time monies?
That's a great question. And I will tell you that over the last couple of years, we've actually had a lot of one-time monies come in and we've been able to utilize that for some book purchases. We did course materials. We were able to purchase textbooks, social studies and Algebra II. My daughter has a brand-new Algebra II textbook this year because of that curriculum. We were also able to address some learning loss issues and learning recovery issues through a learning recovery block grant, which is about $800,000. About 80% went to reading, about 20% went to student well-being. We've had other one-time grants, one called the Arts, Music and Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant. It's a mouthful, I apologize. But about 83% of that went to updating curriculum and content as well as professional development. So that is how we've utilized it in the past.
Thank you. Tina?
Yeah, this was, this was something I thought maybe would be asked. So I, I'll just read a couple of thoughts that I had that I jotted down before. We know that one-time funds will have either a specific category, what those funds can be used for, or it might just have just generic, like you can use them as you wish. But again, they're one-time and it's something that, whatever we want to purchase, it's something that will have a longevity of multiple years or we know that it's just a one-time effort. But items that continue to come up are deferred maintenance of our facilities, aging out and out-of-date textbooks, and also investing in one of our most invaluable resources, our, our staff, and allowing them to access professional development. So, you know, it's, but those are not the best uses of your one-time funds because that's, you know, probably something you're only allowed to use for the one year and we need to create a plan for three to five years. I know our budgets are usually just lined up for the three-year, three-year forward.
Thank you. Wish?
Well, it's important to point out, and Tina kind of mentioned this, but I want to make sure that it's clear. Often those one-time funds are categorical funds, which means they have already been set. It's already been decided by the state how they can be spent. During COVID, a lot of those were for PPE. Laco decided, which is LA County of Education, decided that the COVID tests should be implemented. And so those were purchased through those and then we had to get reimbursed for that. There wasn't a choice there. You know, I think with some of the funds that we have now, we have a lot of deferred maintenance. We have, you know, there's, the deferred textbook adoption is, I mean, it's eight years or so behind. We're finally just starting to catch up this past year. Every seven years, new curriculum is supposed to be adopted for each content area and it roughly costs about $500,000 per content area. I would also like to see us use some of this for the professional development, professional development, because that does last. That does go a long way. If you implement, if you use the money now, those teachers are still going to be able to rely on that training that they had this year in two years or three years. I'd also love to say.
Oh, thank you. I know, it's so tempting.
Sorry, so tempting.
Okay, the next question, we'll start with Tina. El Segundo unified and acted new measures as a result of the recent lawsuit to prevent further bullying. Do you think MBUSD has sufficient measures already in place? And if so, provide examples. Are there measures you would advocate for MBUSD to add to prevent bullying?
Yeah, like I said earlier, this is something that I've seen, you know, being a, a community member on the ground here on the campuses and my own son having experienced a discrimination issue in, in the middle school. And I thought it was a one-off situation and I, I kind of just covered my ears to it until I realized when more parents heard about it, like lots of people were telling me about their kids' experiences. So that's when I decided to kind of shift my volunteer roles and help with the culture of cares on campus. So I know we're at the infancy of it. We're trying to figure out, you know, the right way and which, because when you implement a culture of care, there, it's, it's multi-dimensional. It's, it's in the programs at lunch, the assemblies after school, but it's also inside of the curriculum, whether it's history class or English class. So we have to tackle this from multiple dimensions. And I'm, I'm excited that we have started the process and I, I'm excited about how we're going to implement it at the middle school and, and hopefully, and the high school's doing it organically in the clubs and there can be more.
Thank you. Wish?
You know, it's unfortunate with this lawsuit that it's finally put a lot of people on notice that not emphasizing these anti-bullying and, you know, all of these, all of these great programs have had different names, anti-bullying, multicultural education, safe school ambassador, social emotional wellness, no place for hate. You know, sometimes the name changes, but the message is still the same. Treat people the way you want to be treated and be kind and inclusive. It's as simple as that. It's a shame that it sometimes takes financial burdens to, for people to understand that this is serious. Obviously, you know, the, the emotional damage that's done is far worse than that. But if we don't continue the work around culture of care, we will not only be doing a disservice to our kids, but we will be doing a disservice to our future budgets as well.
Thank you. Jen?
So the case regarding El Segundo sets really interesting precedent for all districts in the area as well as in the neighborhood. We need to consider everything that happened there, what they could have done to prevent that which caused the $1 million lawsuit. We need to take a look, we need to take a look at the programs that we have here at MBUSD. The focus on academic excellence is never going to go away. But as I stated earlier, we really need to have conversations about safety. We need to have conversations about mental health. We do have clubs. We do have safe school ambassador. We do have stand-up inclusion. We do have social emotional wellness programs. But with a million-dollar settlement, we would be foolish not to be putting in more empathy and more mental health services for our students.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Wish. I'm going to try to read this. El Segundo unified and acted new measures as a result, oh, sorry, that's the one we just did. What do candidates think of the proposed changes to the MBUS bell schedule, especially a potential reduction to six subject periods? And the effects on electives like music? Sorry, can't read that. STEM and world languages?
So my daughter just started at the middle school this year. So, you know, I, I'm really excited about the idea of this. And as a former teacher, I can say that what you could achieve with students in, you know, an 80-minute block or, you know, they're looking at a couple of different schedules. But what you can accomplish in that versus the 45 minutes is significant. And, you know, it was mentioned in the question, you know, music, STEM, other areas. All of our middle schoolers want to experience more of those classes. You know, I know that my own daughter was so excited to find out which wheel class that she was going to get because those were all the ones, and she wanted to try every one of them and so did all of her friends. And, you know, when they got their schedules, that was the thing that they were all talking about. And it's so exciting that our schools have so many wonderful classes and programs, especially our music program. I mean, it is just, you know, second to none. And, you know, I, I am excited by the idea. I do know it is an uphill battle and will be costly and will involve a lot of professional development.
Thank you. Jen?
Block schedules are interesting. Block schedules give your kids more time in a class. It gives you more time with your teacher, more time to understand the material. I think block schedules are great, but there are some drawbacks. When going from a block schedule with what MBMS has now to a six-period class, we'd very likely lose things like math, like STEM, like music. My, my daughter is a music, you know, she's, she's a music kid. She's been taking violin since she was in the second grade at MBMS, excuse me, at Robinson. So I would be, I'd be worried what happens to some of those electives. Before I made a decision, I'd really want to see a presentation from the school. I'd want to find out what their office hours are. I'd want to find out how they're utilizing these minutes. I'd want to find out what their plan is to allow our students to explore the various pathways that MBMS does offer our kids and how that would translate into the pathways that go into Costa.
Thank you. Tina?
I've seen firsthand the award-winning programs in music that we have here. I think one of my most exciting field trips was marching on the red carpet alongside our marching band across Hollywood Boulevard. And that doesn't happen overnight. And, and different from sports and athletics, I have, my girls are in sports, but my son was in, in music. You know, with sports, you have club sports, so you're practicing 10 hours, if not 12 hours a week, beyond your hour here or two hours here at school. Music doesn't have that. Music, there's no club music program for our families to invest in. So what we have to do is to invest in our school system at that third grade level all the way through for music. If we go with a block schedule and we eliminate one of those class periods, that doesn't, that has, that forces the middle school student to choose and like lose this, this award-winning, what's so unique about our district. I know that we opted not to go to Da Vinci because the, the music program here was phenomenal and I still believe in it and I'll always believe in it. And it's not just music, it's all of our VAPA programs. So we have to make sure that we create that pathway and that we don't have to make our families choose.
Thank you.
And we're off for music.
Okay, our next question, we'll start with Jen. Enrollment drives most funding in public schools. What can the district do to stabilize and increase enrollment?
And to say that enrollment is declining rapidly and we are losing students in the drove is a little bit of a misstatement. I think you have to look beyond the census data that says we have X number of parcels, therefore there's X number of students that should be enrolled in our district. We have kids on permit. We have kids who come to MBUSD through enrollment agreements with North Redondo and Hermosa Beach. We have employees who send their kids here. What I can say is that we have seen a decline in enrollment since COVID. This was a statewide trend. In May, our enrollment numbers were about 5,800. Just last week, we announced that our projected enrollment numbers are over 5,900. So at a time when enrollment is declining in other districts, it's really nice to see that MBUSD is increasing and we need to continue with the efforts that we've, we've been embarking on.
Thank you. Tina?
One of the things I do is apply my time doing a lot of research. I looked at Palis Verdes District. I know where they are as far as they're, you know, above 4.0s. I know where we are as far as our above 4.0s. And I also looked at their declining enrollment. We are, we are not unique in, in declining enrollment over the last couple of years. And of course, COVID threw a little bit of a, of a twist into it. But we also know that, that sometimes when you look at the numbers, it's, it's the, it's the layer underneath. So we, we look like we might be stable going from eighth grade to ninth grade in our numbers. But when you look at who makes up those numbers, we have plenty of students coming in, whether it's from Hermosa or Redondo or permit. But we look flat because we're not, we're not looking at the kids that left. So what can we do? What research can we do? What, how can we make sure that those, those families don't leave? And I'd like to make sure that we, I know Dr. Boz instituted the concept of an exit interview. I think that's going to be super powerful for us to get more information than we've had in the past.
Thank you. Wish?
I was excited to read Dr. Boz's email last week, on Friday, when he did announce that the enrollment is up for this academic school year. The official numbers will come in at the first week of October. But the one thing that we did note, that we do know But the one thing that we did know, that we do know, is that in, they're up in elementary school and they're up in high school, but they're not up in middle school. And I think that this is where we have an area of growth. You know, we talked about the block schedule. So I've seen an example, and when I taught in Pennsylvania, they have what's called teams. And so one of the reasons that a lot of our families choose not to go to middle school is because it's so large, and they find it overwhelming and scary. Usually, the parents find it a little scarier than the kids do. But, you know, so there's a model where you can break up the, the grade levels into teams, and so then you have 6A and 6B, for example, 7A and 7B. And so then you make those communities a little bit smaller and a little bit more accessible, and you're with more of the same kids and the same cohort throughout the day.
Thank you. Okay. The next question, we'll start with Tina. What changes, if any, has COVID had on our children's current education?
I think I'm one of the few parents that loved COVID. I had three kids in three different schools. I was working from home, my husband was working from home, and we really became co-learners with our kids. And we could hear, you know, as walking through, what the teachers were doing, what the teachers were asking of our kids. I felt like that the transparency that some people talk about in our, that doesn't exist, it, it's there. We're allowed to log into their Google Classroom. We're allowed, as a parent, to become a part of the Google Classroom. So I think with, with COVID, we learned more about our district than we probably ever knew. And I think that's exciting that we can, you know, leverage all the technology that we had to use with Zoom or with Google Classroom, all the things that our kids are teaching us, some of the technologies that they had to learn. So I think we need to take the pluses from, from that experience.
Thank you. Wish?
As a former first-grade teacher, I will say there is, was definitely a decline in phonemic awareness, and, you know, as a first-grade teacher, I often looked like a crazy person, the way that I would enunciate every single syllable that came out of my mouth, but that's how children learn how to read. And when you couldn't see your teacher's face for so long, they just, they couldn't grasp it like they could before. So I think that, and I'm, I'm seeing that our teachers are addressing that, which I'm happy to see. You know, of course, there's some holes in math, but again, our teachers, and then back to school, and I was really impressed at what they're doing to try to address some of those needs. I think that at MBMS, there were a lot of social connections lost, and I'm so thrilled about our new admin team. And already, the number of social events that have happened since just the beginning of the school year, and it's only mid-September. And I know there's a lot more planned, and our PTA leaders there are very excited about a lot of the events that are coming up, and our kids are excited, and there's so much energy there. And my favorite thing that I heard about middle school this year was that our custodian, and I'm, oh.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Stay tuned for that exciting story. Jen?
COVID was a challenging time for everybody. It was a challenging time for parents. It was a challenging time for school districts. It was a challenging time for school boards. And I will say that we did the best that we could with the information that we had, all while abiding by the mandates that we were forced to follow, right? As a school district, we have to follow the state, the county, federal governments. In terms of learning loss, I know that there's been some articles about learning loss in the New York Times. I know there's been an article in the LA Times about learning loss. Truthfully, our California State testing will come back soon, and we'll see what those numbers are. I will say that MBUSD is not the same as LA Unified. Our kids were logging online. Our kids had access to resources. My biggest concern, and Wish touched upon this, is really the social connections. My kids were in middle school at the time. They're now in high school. You know how you're supposed to sit next to the boy you like, or you're supposed to call him? My kids didn't have that. And I see a little bit of developmental delays because of that. Kids are social beings. Teenagers are social beings. They need to be with their friends.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we will start off with Wish. Part of your obligation as a board member is to serve on multiple committees. Which ones do you think you would add, would add the most value to? And what committees do you feel you have the most to learn from?
So certainly, the Budget Advisory Committee, which I have served on for several years. I have experience working on both Measure MB and Measure A. So I think that the, and I've seen what works and what doesn't work. Also, as a teacher, I can really speak to what should be a priority. And a lot of things sound good on a piece of paper, but they're not actually impact, impacting learning and safety like we think that they are, and vice versa. Some things don't, don't sound that exciting, or aren't things that parents want to really pay for, but our teachers are buying into it, our students are buying into it, and it's making a difference. I think that the Special Education Advisory Committee, I think there's a lot of potential for growth there. I have a lot of ideas, but I won't be able to say them in a minute, so I'm not going to go there. I would like to learn more about our music program. My own children, they have done, you know, the elementary-level basic classes, but I'd like, I feel like there's a lot of things to learn there. Writing things on large post-its, and I think that it does allow for a little bit more informal conversation and just more ideas to flow. I think that that is something we could, you know, bring into it. I also think it's important to sit down with people that you don't necessarily agree with. And there's at least one or two people here tonight that I have met recently that don't share all the same opinions as me, but were able to sit down and have a civil conversation and find some common ground. And, you know, then when things come up, you have a little bit of the benefit of the doubt. If you have these personal connections with people that don't necessarily agree with you, it's not an easy thing to do. I, I will tell you that, and it's a little-
Thank you. So the next question, Tina will go first. What special skills or training prepare you for this position? And please play a rundown of your qualifications, resume, and experience as relates to MBUSD in one minute.
I always swing back to my first job out of college, which was being hired on as a technology consultant in, in one of the young technology firms, technology partner firms. And what that allowed me to do was work on, you know, six to, six-to-12-month projects across multiple industries, across multiple companies. And I had to jump into a culture and learn their industry within a month, and, and then understand what's, what's going to work and what's not going to work based on those, the, the people that I was working with, and then implement something that they were going to be proud of with them as a partner. So I'm, it's just something that I learned through methodologies and through trainings in that, in the company that I was working for. I never had to change a paycheck, just always come from the same company, but I was able to work at over 12, 20 companies, and it, it really grounded me, and will allow me to jump into MBUSD at this level, and I'm excited to do so.
Thank you. Wish?
I've mentioned several times, I was classroom teacher. I was also a professional development lead at my school in Roscommon Road, so I have a lot of experience in this area, and I know it's really tough to train teachers. We make the worst audience. I've been PTA president at Pacific, I've been a Girl Scout leader, I, you know, I've worked on Measure, the Measure MB campaign, I worked on, I was the co-chair of Measure A. I've been the honorary service awards chair at Pacific, I've done a parent party. District Advisory Council President is where I learned a lot. And it was at a time during COVID when I was getting daily calls, you know, 10, 12 calls a day of parents that were very upset, of course, and, you know, all with 10 or 12 different ideas and ways that we should be, what we should be doing and how we should be doing it. And so I'm well-equipped to be able to handle when there's a lot of different ideas coming at you and a lot of different opinions. But the most important job I've ever had is being an advocate for children, and representing them and fighting for them. And I feel like one of the best things I did was to really, really push hard to get the special needs students back first.
Thank you. Jen?
Professionally, I am a lawyer. I have worked with underserved communities from the moment I stopped attending law school, right? I graduated, and I worked immediately for a disability rights organization. I now work for a charter school. We serve underserved individuals, 1,500 kids in LA County. Also, I have been heavily involved with the schools. In 2013, when we moved to the district, I immediately immersed myself because I knew that volunteering was important. I was PTA president, I was MBF's vice president, I was co-chair of the Measure C and EE bond campaign, I ran the 2018 parcel tax campaign. I have come through the ranks of MBUSD, like many of you who are sitting in this room who have had children go through the district. You understand that parent volunteering makes us special, and without that, our district would look nothing like we want it to. I'm also a parent of two. My kids started here in elementary, so we've done elementary, middle, and high school.
Thank you. Does everyone answer this question?
Yeah.
No? No? Tina?
Oh.
Absolutely. That'll be our last question tonight, because all of you are actually melting. We will start with Wish. What do you think the biggest challenge to the district will be in the next few years?
You know, I, I mentioned it before, and I, I think it's really critical. You know, we have to be able to bring people together, and regardless of who is elected, the board is going to have to work together and be collaborative. And it's important that you have different perspectives and different backgrounds that come together. If we're not capable of listening and sitting down and hearing people, we have no business being up here. You know, of course, there will be other challenges around budget, around deciding what programs, you know, we are facing potentially another facilities bond, but the Measure MB bond, I mean, the Measure MB parcel tax is also expiring. So in 2024, we're going to have to face that decision, because bond measures can only be passed an even number of years, and it's the same that Measure MB will be expiring. So there will be lots of challenges, for sure, but it's mostly around bringing us back together.
Jen?
Aside from that answer, I think what we're going to look at is staffing. Most people are going to say funding, most people are going to say enrollment, but really, it is the staffing, and I talked about that a little bit earlier, because the staffing also correlates to the number of students that we have in our classrooms, it correlates to class sizes. There is a staffing shortage that is happening across the nation. I'm sure you've read about it. Our HR department is working overtime to fill those places to ensure that our students have the most qualified teachers. If we don't have the budget to pay these teachers what they deserve, we will not be able to attract and retain them. As soon as these one-time, you know, one-time grants start to roll off, and we are all reliant on base funding, districts across the county, across the state are relying on that same funding, which MBUSD does not get much of, we're not going to be able to compete. So we need to work now to ensure that we can get staffing in the classrooms now. We need to make sure that we are working on our recruiting efforts, as I mentioned, raising our subrates. Let's look at some of our subcontractors.
Thank you. Tina?
I think one of the most important challenges that we need to be looking at carefully is relating to the mental health crisis that we see in our students. We know that our, our neighboring school district, Palos Verdes, has seen an increase in suicides in the last two years. Their numbers were about six in the last two years. We also have seen it in Palo Alto, there was a cluster of suicides in 2015. We also see it in colleges, you know, successful students that are making it to Stanford or making it to the University of Michigan, we're also seeing student athletes, you know, suicides on the rise. So I think it's, it's our best interest to make sure that we create this safe sense of belonging, and we keep our, our students safe and healthy, and that way, we know that we can increase, you know, the whole academic success across our district, as well as just, you know, just creating happy, healthy students that want to come to school every day. So I, I want to make sure that we, we are always having our eye on the mental health state of our kids.
Thank you. And now for our closing statements, we will go in reverse order. They will have one minute, and we will start with Jen Fenton.
Councilmember Richard Montgomery likes to say that I've battle-tested, and he is absolutely correct. His roughness is already excellent, but if we want to take it to the next level, that requires experience. Let's keep MBUSD a top-tier district. Let's maintain a prudent budget, and let's reimagine the pathways to all of our students. You have three votes in November. I hope Jen Fenton is one of them.
Thank you. Wish Weinstein?
Again, on behalf of the candidates, thank you, Easy Reader and League of Women Voters for putting this together tonight, and thank you for all those watching at home. I am running because our kids deserve a quality education and, and board members that they can trust. A healthy board is made up of those with different backgrounds and different professional experiences that can find a way together to find solutions. No one can do this job alone. It requires collaboration and an integral knowledge of how schools function. It requires us to be proactive and not reactive if we want to maintain the quality of schools we have all come to expect here in Manhattan Beach. It requires countless volunteer hours. I have spent thousands of hours over the last eight years with all aid schools. I will be able to hit the ground running on day one. I am built for this. My kids are young, so I'm in this for the long haul. My wide range of experience, my real-life experience with school finance, and the solutions